Good evening, everyone. Tonight, the Town Council Legal Meeting, Wednesday, November 18th, 2020. We are going to be meeting. And I was Dennis Bellutis in the pledge again.
Here we go. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dennis.
Okay.
Better, doesn't it?
Yes.
All right, move on to number two, visitors. Are there any visitors on the call that would like to be recognized at this time? Any visitors? There are none, we'll move on to number three, which is the approval of the minutes for the November 4th, 2020 meeting. At this point, I will just motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Abstained? Okay, thank you. And next on to number four, which we don't have any, so appointments and reappointments that are not on the agenda for tonight's meeting. So we can move on to number five, which is to approve the application for emergency management performance grant. Everybody got the information that Mary had sent out earlier today. This, I mean, before we get into this, does anybody, Mike's on the call. Does anybody have any specific questions about this grant? We can move forward with the motion to approve the application for the emergency management performance grant.
Make that motion, Tim.
Second?
Second.
Getting a heck of a feedback.
Talking, can you go unmute? Anybody who's not talking, just please go unmute so that we don't get the feedback.
Yeah, we're getting a buzzing.
Like someone's landing a plane.
Okay, now. All right, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Abstained? Thank you. And next, we'll move on to number six, which is the, to approve the acceptance of the Middlesex United Way Grant. David Marillo, I believe, is on the call. If anybody has any questions for David before we get into this one?
Dave, I guess you're gonna tell us a little bit about this, but I did see at the end of the documents you sent to us, documents to be submitted yearly Patriot Act compliance. Is there any way, any way you could tell us a little bit about what that even means to a locality?
He's on mute.
Sorry about that. It's a little check off list that they require every year to make sure you're not giving money to terrorists. There are other groups that do it too, or the things sponsored by terrorists, or there's a little more detail to it than that. But it's something that came out with the Patriot Act to make sure that government money or foundation money wasn't going to terrorists. And we've cut, we've, we cut off all our terrorist funding in light of this change that they have.
Thank you, Dave, just, just checking.
Good job, David.
This is a $1,600 grant for half the year. Basically, it's running late. Little background, generally, this grant is $6,400 for the whole year. Because of the pandemic, they were giving a lot of their money to basic needs and not to prevention programs. And they decided to give out $1,600. They have recently told us there will be a second $1,600 in the second half of the year. They have seen and basically approved our, our application already so we could hit the ground running. The money we used to be spent on a job shadow program where Joe Pagliani would take kids from Morgan High School and, and they would visit based on their career interests, different kinds of places. Some of them were pretty amazing. This isn't enough money to do that this year, and it's also, we can't get the kids to come out of the high school. They won't even be in the high school to, to do that. So our, our job shadow career program will be put off. What we're doing here is expanding our suicide prevention efforts. We're going to train more high school age kids. We've been kind of on the forefront of, of that. The second thing that we intend to do is with all of the teachers and parents that have been trained and all of the people in the community, we're going to be looking to make stickers and posters. So there'll be something that says, I'm QPR trained, you can talk to me if you want to, or something a little more catchy than that, hopefully. But for us to be able to market, and then we're gonna get high school kids or recent graduates to be trained as trainers. So they, along with the other trainers that we have in the community, can continue to, to do the QPR training. Oh, QPR is kind of an equivalent to CPR, but instead of about your heart, it's about suicidality and to question, persuade and refer. So that's the thing, they kind of liken it to CPR and are getting results that the more widespread it is in the community, the better the results are with this. So this is one of many things we've, we've done in that area in the past two years. But this is a grant that, for $1,600 to do this, and I would expect that I would be back to you pretty soon for permission for the second half of the year application.
All right, thank you, David. Anybody else have any other questions? Okay, at this point then, can we get a motion to approve the acceptance of the Middlesex United Way Grant?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any other further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Abstained? Thank you, thank you, David.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on now to item number seven, which is the approval of the 2021 meeting calendar. Obviously, going forth, same as we have in the past with the morning meeting at the beginning of the month and an evening meeting at the end of the month. So at this point, the motion to approve the meeting calendar for 2021. So moved. The second?
Second.
Is there discussion at all?
Yep.
So is this, have we already set these dates? This would be the, the first Wednesday would be that AM meeting, and then the second would be the evening meeting?
That's correct.
Is there any, any reason, and not just for me selfishly, because it's difficult to make the morning meetings, but I'm thinking of others who may wish to seek this office in the future, knowing that that morning meeting is something simply because of work they can't make. Is there any talk of altering that time to make it more, more doable for, for many folks who work your standard nine to five hours?
Anyone?
Eric, I tried for years to get meetings to be at night, and believe me, it never flies. Ten years I tried. They... I don't have a paper copy of that calendar, so I made the motion to approve it, and I was kind of premature because I just want to make sure there aren't any conflicts. I mean, didn't we discover last year or year before that there was a holiday on one of the years, I just, on one of the days? Are we clear, we're sure that none of these days conflict with anything, you know, imperative?
Now that you set the schedule, then I can go and do the calendar up, and then I can send it out to everyone.
Okay, all right. Okay, well, I made the motion, right?
We have a second, so is there any other further discussion?
Yeah, I just, is anyone else open to it? Again, it's not solely just because it's difficult for me to make the meetings. I'm just thinking down the road of, of others who find that eight o'clock meeting time very difficult. Is that gonna, is it conducive to others, you know, running for council in the future? Is that something that would deter them from seeking the office?
I don't know, I can't answer that. Anybody else have any comments on it?
I'll make it work for me, I mean, that's, is anyone else? Okay, all right, that's okay.
All right, so here are none, is there a motion to approve the 2021 meeting calendar? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. And now we'll move on to number eight, town manager's financial forecast.
This will be something new for you. I'm not sure that the town has done this before. So we're going to do, I tried to put together something for you to be able to look around the corner before we get into the budget season, so that you can get an understanding of where we've been and where, where I guess we'll be headed long run on... Or having the town's finances going forward. Forecast is a best practice. Many municipalities do this. I'm not getting a cooperation here on my computer, but, so if you can all read and see this. So first and foremost, this is not a budget. Just want to make sure that everyone understands that we're not talking about a budget at this point in time. We're talking about a planning tool, looking at the town's long-term finances, both where we've been and where we could be going in the future. The going forward piece is really trying to make some informed budgetary decisions and anticipate some of the risks that we see coming forward. This is a question that we get from our, when we're going out issuing debt, the bond reading agencies are looking to see whether the town is doing any sort of planning or financial forecasting. Because they're, they're looking to make sure we understand what our financial conditions may be in the future. So looking at some recent trends, so that you have an understanding of the background of where we've been. This gives you a view of the grand list. The town's grand list is still in a point of recovery coming out of the 2008 recession. What I've given you is just the component of it, that's residential values and the non-residential values. This is the core of the grand list. Automobiles are not included in this particular slide. Door business, personal property, this is just the real estate piece of it. You can see that as a total, values dropped following the recession and really haven't recovered. During the last two revales, there also weren't large jumps in value that sometimes you see coming out of a revale. One bright spot is that the, the orange bars, which represent the commercial and industrial properties, you've got a larger recovery there where they have returned and grown since the 2009 recession. And the top bar, and it shows you the percentages, you'll also see that commercial and industrial property has grown as a percentage of the town's grand list. So you've got positive in the commercial space, but really residential has been flat from, from 2008 recession going forward. That growth rate in terms of the grand list, you can see the collapse that took place from the last recession. And then you'll see the growth that's taken place since then. It's been inconsistent. Again, you don't see those large spikes in value coming out of revales. And on average, it's been about half a percent a year. In some cases, you're, you're beating that, in other cases, not so much. Last year, we had about 1% growth in the grand list, which pushed us over the average. But in the past, it's, it's, you can see that it's been, it's varied. The mill rate likewise is varied. It's grown, but the percent increase has varied over time. Recent history, there have been two 10% tax increases, and other times, it's been trying to keep it to two or less, where the, where the budgets have ultimately shook out. And of course, as you know, going into the current fiscal year, we're coming in off of a zero. Our revenue mix, going from 15, 16 to 19, 20, looking at the last five years, not including the current budget we're in. Property taxes are the largest component of our revenue stream, and it's grown over time. State grants and aid are the next largest category, and it has shrunk over time. That local revenue, the, the money that's generated in the town and sort of those other categories has been a small piece. If it drops, it's not something that's significantly consequential to the town because property taxes are the primary driver, followed by state aid. Looking at that last year, I, there's two columns there. One includes some FEMA reimbursement. If you took out the FEMA reimbursement, you can see that reliance on property taxes is significantly higher from where you were, going back to 15, 16. Total expenditures for the town have grown over, by, over 9% going from 15, 16 to 19, 20. You've got an annual increase that comes in at an average of 2.3%. The 19, 20 fiscal year is an anomaly because that's the COVID year with the Board of Education having significant underspend. Spans out as anomaly, what, trying to put in any kind of trend analysis. Looking at the snapshot by expense categories, Board of Ed's, the total value with the Board of Ed's budget has grown by an average of 4.3%. The town, I have debt, debt services has more than doubled in terms of a cost center. Capital is a reduction, but capital, capital is varied in a year-to-year basis. Very, the total expenditures and slices of the pie, the town budget's been basically unchanged as a percent of total. So that's the past five fiscal years. Debt services has more than doubled, and capital, capital has a reduction. The Board of Ed has a higher pure dollar amount, but as a percent of the total budget, it's, it's less. Looking at town expenditures, this is easier for us to talk about and control through council action rather than Board of Ed. You've got compensation, employee benefits, and other expenditures. As a service organization, the town is going to be a little bit heavier on employees than, say, a manufacturer. Looking at it, you can see that staff have been static for a while, trending downwards. That compensation piece has been essentially flat. The benefits component has grown over time. That's got some liabilities in there that need to be acknowledged. Healthcare has increased repeatedly, and you also have increased liabilities for your pension benefits. You get two slices of pension here. You've got MRF, which is the state's liabilities, that they're calculating for those employees that are in the state municipal employee retirement program. And then we've got another local pension program here. One set of liabilities you can't really control because that, that comes through us to the state. The other one is liabilities that we're a little bit more in the driver's seat on, but in both cases, it's been growing over time. Expenditure by cost center. Public safety is the largest component, but it hasn't really changed in terms of pure dollar amounts in the last five years. Library, again, has been pretty much static. Public works has had some slight growth, but nothing significant to report. Parking rent has been basically static, and the other chunks of the town that round out the budget, it's been small growth, but, but nothing significant. Hence why the town has, really hasn't deviated as a percent of the total, total budget left. Debt service, this is, this is the doubling that's taking place with all the bonds that have been issued for the school and infrastructure projects. So you can, you can see here that, that we've, we've gone from an annual lift of 2.5 million up to 5.1 million in five years. Capital, the history, you can see various, it's been in years of over a million, and then there's been years of three quarters of a million, and then you swing back to, to over a million. And it's been inconsistent over time, going, going based on in terms of what, what goes in and what doesn't go into the budget. Fund balance, there's two types of fund balance. One is just general fund balance, and the other is the unassigned fund balance for purposes of bonding. 15% is the target, and it's 15% of the unassigned fund balance. That would be the orange column. I know in the past, 12% has been used as a benchmark, 10% has been used as a benchmark. The current benchmark employed by Standard and Poor's can be 15%. So that's something we need to be mindful of as we continue to rely on issuing bonds. So forecasts, trying to look going forward, giving you an idea of some of the, the factors that went into the numbers that I put together. Again, it's not a budget, this is trying to put together some trends. We know state aid is going to continue to decline next year. It's definitely going down based on formula changes to the education cost grant, which is aligned shareable yet. But it's safe to assume that pandemic recovery is going to impact a number of state budgets. And while maybe the rainy day fund can keep the current state budget going forward for one fiscal year, there're going to have to be changes in some of the out years. Local non-tax revenue is also assumed to have slow growth, coming off of the reset that went into the FY21 budget. We're not sure where, what the long-term trend is going to be on the local real estate market, and similarly with permit activity. In this case, for modeling, I assume the grand list would increase by an annual rate of four tenths of a percent rather than that half a percent. There's been no assumption regarding increases in values to revaluation. History tells us that there aren't big spikes. There wasn't an assumption made either for the value of the Indian River shops. Tax collection, I put it back at 98.8 from 98.5 that we dropped it down to for the current fiscal year. I made an educated guess that the Board of Ed would come in at 3% a year. There are no significant new initiatives assumed on the town side. There is an assumption of putting money in for the OPEM contribution, other employee benefits assumption, as well as increasing pension liabilities through MRF and the town's program. Assuming stable funding commitment for capital expenditures, an end to the car leasing policy and pay-as-you-go through capital. And the debt would be based on the current amortization schedule. It does not include added debt for any immediate bonding needs. We've got a couple of bridge projects that were approved by referendum that will be moving, that are moving forward. So that needs to be layered in to the current amortization schedule. So this shows you the grand list growth of, of slow building, kind of coming, it coming out of where we were. Assuming that a consistent rate of growth rather than the inconsistency that you had previously. On the revenue side, that top bar, the orange one is state aid. So on the other side of the FY21 line, it continues to decline. I'm assuming that it will slow its decline, and there are going to be drops, but that's really a function of what these finances wind up looking like. The gray line gives you the departmental fees, and you can see that that's basically a straight line at this point. The blue line for other taxes, that would be supplemental tax bills, interest income, things of that nature. So that looks like more of a return back to normal. The yellow line of appropriated fund balance, if you recall the budget, there's always been about 250,000. That's assumed, that could be used, if needed. It normally just goes towards the mill rate calculation of reducing what the tax bill is going to be. The green line is implied fund balance. So this would be more what we did this year of using fund balance or cash to pay for capital projects and baking that into the budget, and my assumption was a fixed dollar amount going forward. So that fixed dollar amount, they assumed half a million dollars, which is kind of where the town was historically. FY19, 20, and 21, there's some variability in there, but it looks like there was consistent, consistent practice in the past. Forecasting expenses going forward, annualized, it would be about a 2.3% increase. As a percent of the pie, that would be starting its trend down. That was the whole point of the refi that we did, to shave the top off the hill. Board of Ed hasn't assumed to grow the rate off of where they're at. Capital expenditures, I assumed would be level funded, but over time, it diminishes as a slice of the pie. And then trying to spit out all of that math to give an idea of where mill rate forecasts could go. Assuming forecasted expenditures and revenues came in, you're looking at mill rate increases that would start to annualize at about 2.4% going forward without, without intervention adjustments or improving outside factors. So some of the pressure points that bake into the budget to be mindful of as we go into the budget season. Town's budget is incredibly sensitive to fluctuations in state aid. When those numbers drop coming out of Hartford, it puts an awful lot of pressure on local taxes to fill that gap. So we've got short-term knowledge that ECS goes down next year based on the governor's budget, as we sit here today. But really, it's that long-term concern. State has gotten itself into the practice of bonding for a number of those programs that turn into grants and aid to towns. So if there's going to be a debt diet at the state level, it's going to put pressure on what the source of funds is that delivers some of the local funding that towns rely on. Grand list growth, trying to give you an idea of swing and sensitivity. So I assumed it was going to grow to four tenths of a percent. It grows at half a percent, which was, was the average going into this. That annualized mill rate increase drops two tenths of a percent. If we could get to 1%, annualized mill rate drops below 2%. I don't know whether it's a sustainable rate, but you can, you can see the, that mill rate chips down a little bit based on larger growth in grand list at this point. So on the expenditure side of the budget, the budgets are obviously something that we can control and influence. Forecast simply sets a benchmark or a target to try and meet. We'll be looking at seeking costing opportunities, and then looking at strategies to manage liabilities and debt growth. If some of those strategies pan out, it gives you opportunity to bend some of the cost curves that were built into the forecast. Debt policy, something that the council's going to have to take a look at for what we're going to do for future bonding and/or capital budgeting. I know things were cut out of capital budgets, and it was shifted over to bonding. There was also a practice before that of having dedicated reserves. Looking at reserves again was baked into the current budget as a, as a policy initiative. How that pans out for the future for other infrastructure projects, for what, what we're going to lift and what we're actually going to bond become topics of conversation for what the town's long-term financial direction is going to be. Again, those long-term liabilities, some aside from debt, it's really sort of pension obligations and what we do on those fronts. The pensions have assumptions for what investment rates of return are going to be. Those investment rates of return aren't being realized on Wall Street. In theory, the, that assumption should bend down to reflect reality. It puts more actuarial pressure on what, what you need to have for dollars in your, in your pension funds as a result. So you can be intellectually honest, but you have to be, carry the financial consequences of that. you can be intellectually honest, but you have to be carry the financial consequences of that. Current services, there are some baked in growth uh that need to be acknowledged. Uh solid waste disposals expected to increase. We got a large uh increase in tip fee from MIRA for this fiscal year. There'll be another one next year and likely for an extended period of time until the state makes a policy decision that's going to actually have an impact on cost. There are a number of ideas floating around, but they're not scaled up sufficiently at this point. Or a public policy decision needs to be made by the state. Creating the market, giving the direction of the towns to make uh make changes that could, could reduce where, where we're going with uh solid waste expense. And then uh nothing is added in this forecast for senior services. I'm not sure what that's going to look like, what the, what, what your advisory committee is going to deliver next month. So that would also have to be added. And consistency on capital expenditures is, is really the only other, the only other item to, to look in terms of what that starts to be as an acceptable dollar amount for capital expenditure that keeps up our infrastructure, keeps up our systems uh going forward. There's an assumption in forecast, but if there's the sweet spot at less than that, obviously that's another point where you could, you could start bending the cost curve. Uh so that's, that's it for a forecast. I can send this out to everybody. So you can have it um for your own uh leisure reading later, uh if you're so inclined. Gives you an idea of what we're looking at and in terms of uh where the town could be going in the future. Uh absent some, some interventions that will have to take place across a number of fronts.
Thank you very much, Carl. Anybody have any questions? All right. Thank you again. This is uh great information for us to have. We will now move on to number eight, which is the, nope, when we want the number nine, which is the finance director's report. So Sue, you're on.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. Uh you have the October report. I'll just go through some of the highlights in there. Um you will see recorded in October was a $2.2 million sale of the old Morgan. Um some state revenues were addition, were also received for town aid road of 133,000 and municipal stabilization grant of 288,000. Um the ECS, which we typically receive in October, was actually received in November. Um and that will be the budgeted amount and you'll see that in November. Um some additional town revenues to discuss. The town co, tax collections are actually running the same as at the prior year and they're tracking right on with budget. About 55.5% has been collected to date, which is 227,000 dollars more than last year. The other strong revenue areas that were noted in prior month's reports are the town clerk, the building and the police contractual. They continue to remain strong. Town clerks uh fees for the real estate conveniences are beginning to slow down. The building fees are trending up and the police contractual are about the same, but those three areas are tracking higher than the budgeted amount. So we should see some benefit to the full year budget in those areas. Short falls in areas when compared to the prior year are in the town building rentals due to the closures of the buildings and the investment income. These areas were budgeted conservatively, however, so the impact on the full year should not be significant. Uh town expenses, the October expenses were actually $700,000 less than the prior year, but that's really just due to the timing of the board event transfer requests, which make up two and a half million of the 3.7 million dollars of expenses for the month. The remaining expenditures were the normal recurring for the fixed cost contractual and salary and the benefits. All the union contracts have been settled now and all the new wage increases, including any retro adjustments that were agreed to are all reflected now going forward. Um these increases were budgeted as part of the contingency of the 250,000 for the current year. Transfers to cover the line item overages that we'll start seeing the departments as the year rolls on to cover that will be made out of the contingency into those line items. Other areas, the contingency does still remain at the 250, knowing that a portion of that now is being reserved for the union contract settlement that we just, I just mentioned. And the projected available fund balance is the same as the prior month, currently based on the fiscal year 19 balances until we get the 20 settled. The um projects that we have going on, the audit is in process. Um most of the work is being done remotely by them, so it's slowing things down on their part a little bit. I hope to be wrapping up within the next couple of weeks. We're current with everything they have asked and we're just working through their questions and follow up as they get through their work. Other projects we have going on in our short-term list are working on the fiscal year 22 budget, wrapping up the audit and then financing of the notes that will be maturing in February. That's the conclusion of my report. Do you have any questions?
Thanks, Sue.
So yeah, Sue, just, yeah, just one quickly here. At the bottom of your report, it says the E S S E R fund uh awarded the board of ed 166,618 dollars to reimburse the district. Is there any reason to believe that there's more monies in this fund or is that for the most part what we're looking at?
Um that I have to ask uh Mary Ann or Carolyn, that information came directly from them. So I had to follow up with them. They, they are the ones dealing directly with those funds.
I figured that. Thank you, Sue.
Anyone else? All right. Thanks again, Sue.
You're very welcome.
Okay, we'll now move on to number 10, uh chairman's report. Um so a couple of things, just want to thank Carl and obviously the EDC for all the work on securing the grant for our facades for downtown. Uh looking forward to obviously finalizing that grant and moving forward with that, hopefully the spring of next year. Um so just wanted to thank Carl for all of that and the EDC who did a lot of work in um in, in, in relation to this and, and met with a lot of the property owners uh up and down. We wanted to find out really what they're looking for. So it was a lot of hard work by everybody put together. So uh it's good to see that come to fruition and in the spring, hopefully start moving forward with that. Um again, everybody knows, uh want to thank uh Mary for all the work she did for the bricks. Um she received a ton of emails, a ton of responses and she handled it all. So I just wanted to publicly thank Mary for all of her work on the bricks. Um that'll be handing out this weekend. And also thank the Clinton Volunteer Fire Department who's offered up the, to help uh hand out the bricks. So uh thanks for all the hard work in that. Um Eric approached me and asked me, I guess uh WPC, WPCC was looking for liaison maybe uh for their committee. So I know we've kind of, you know, we have liaisons to some of the, the bigger uh commissions and, and committees in town. My thought and suggestion as it relates to that, there are other committees uh in town that do a lot of work and, and you know, put forth the work in, in their committees and commissions and maybe as a council, then we can give them an invite, give the chairperson an invite um on some of these other committees and, and uh commissions to come forth before the council just to give us some direction on what they're working on and just kind of get some interaction with the council. I think would benefit uh, would benefit us as well to know what they're working on. Um so maybe that's something that we can put forth going forward uh with an invitation to one of the, you know, the committees or the commissions uh at our meetings. So maybe that's something we can look into on that. Um and then that is really it. Is there any other questions?
Good. Uh Christine Gupiel regarding the grant, I'd just like to call it specifically. Um we did have quite a bit of help from one particular member of EDC and he spent a quite a bit of time um canvassing the downtown and approaching property owners and um that was a significant amount of time spent doing that. So want to thank him for that work. Um and I also had a question about process for applying to the grant. Um is it EDC that's going to be drafting the process to move forward on it? And or are we setting up a committee and who's going to have the oversight of the process?
Give the EDC a draft process. This is a program I've run before in another municipality. They have the draft for a procedure that I developed in the past and normally ran through the town manager's office because there's somebody there who's regular contact. Ultimately, the EDC was the entity that was approving the grants. Uh and then the staff would follow up with uh completing uh whatever the required uh agreements were with the individual property owner based on what their scope of work is. Uh there is going to be regular reporting that has to go back to DECD and on cash flows and the rest. So it can't be just an EDC thing. It's going to have to flow through manager's office. Uh some of the aspects of what the state grant contract will require is also going to impact what the process would be. Uh so the state has bidding procedures that get put into some of these agreements. And we don't want to make uh business owners have to do uh bidding on small projects. Uh so there's some back and forth that has to take place with the ECD before we're ready to roll out anything.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, we'll move on now to number 11, which is the town manager's report.
Oh, you're on mute.
Yeah, you're on.
Uh you have my report as submitted. The top two items are sort of the issues that are dominating. Uh the biggest is where we stand with COVID at present. Uh there is community spread going on. We are a code red town uh based on the level of uh cases that are floating around town. And uh as, as was noted at the beginning of the meeting, Board of Education has gone remote for two weeks. In response to that level of spread, uh it does not seem to be concentrated coming out of businesses. It seems to be concentrated coming out of uh families, large families, uh social gatherings. Uh so sort of areas that aren't controlled or regulated by phase three, phase two, phase one, phase 2.1. Uh any of the reopening structures aren't, aren't where the, the spread is currently being driven from. Uh so our dashboard is updated weekly. Uh the numbers keep coming in. Uh Mary is posting that to Facebook to make sure the public is aware of case counts. They are significantly higher. Uh November thus far is higher than last month. Last month was nearing the peak of where we were in the spring. So we are, uh our case counts are higher than where we were at the beginning of, uh beginning of COVID. Uh thankfully, there haven't been any deaths to report since September. Uh and hopefully that remains the case uh that, that uh we just have people that are uncomfortable and not, uh not passing away. Uh the budget information I included in my report uh formed a basis on a budget charge given out to all the department heads. And then the board and commissions that submit their own separate budgets. Uh we're looking for tight budgets again going into the new year and obviously implemented revell is something that is going to have an impact on where we ultimately shake out uh in terms of the budget. Uh attached to the report is just a sort of a follow-up from a prior resolution where the council approved a historic records um grant coming out of the state library from the town clerk's office. So you have the award letter of $4,500 attached to the report and see that we did secure the grant. Uh another my public grant or private grant that the town secured uh is from uh Kalia, which is a national standard uh police uh agency and develops uh best practices for how police departments should be uh acting. Uh so um the town was a beneficiary of the Kalia Agency Assistance Program, uh which pretty much lifts all of the costs associated with achieving Kalia certification. We're the only police department in the state of Connecticut to receive this. Uh and it puts us ahead of the curve in terms of responding to the police accountability law that was passed by the general assembly as um they were looking for Kalia certification as a standard. It's a significant financial lift. Case of Clinton, we were able to benefit from uh Kalia's grant program uh to the chip of $11,450 uh that did not have to be taxed for and we're picking that up from Kalia. Which allows us to meet uh one of the requirements coming out of that Police Accountability Act. That's it.
Thank you, Carl.
Carl, this is uh Tim Guerra. I have a question for you. Uh first of all, I'd like to thank you for attending the planning and zoning meeting that you recently attended. And I'd be curious to know what you thought uh about being in front of that uh assembly. Or did it go?
I think it went fine. Uh I was, I was expecting more questions, but uh it was fine for a, a 15-minute quick intro and uh fielding some of their questions.
Would, would you find that, that though, that type of uh, a meeting as brief as it might have been would be uh uh good for other, of, other commissions that uh we have here in town? Would you see any need for attending other commission meetings?
Uh I'm, I'm not adverse to it. I'd personally rather do it in person rather than using the virtual setup, but this is, this is how we're doing business now. Uh so I think Eric pointed out that uh inland wetlands was looking for uh presentation and in other cases I've already gotten on with some of your appointed uh advisory boards who are looking for uh direction and guidance. So I've, I've already been with your senior services advisory committee who are looking for direction and I, I gather sustainability is also looking for direction.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Good. All right. Thank you, Carl. Now move on to number 12, which is town council committee liaison reports. Eric.
I have one, Tim.
Okay, Tim.
A virtual meeting with EDC. Very briefly, a lot of this has already been discussed. But they did talk about the STEM program. Uh and that the PTA evidently under the leadership of Laura Cobank uh is going to, is involved now. Obviously with the situation that we're currently in, I don't know if there's going to have to be a hall to any uh, you know, future progress as far as that's concerned, but at least it was discussed at the last meeting. Uh certainly the STEEP grant was discussed and I think all the members of the EDC felt that there has, they have to do a better job of communicating what the future vision of Main Street is going to be now that we have these funds to use and need to use them. Uh that's about it.
Thank you, Tim. Next.
Yep, uh planning and zoning, and this is somewhat of a follow-up to Tim's question. Uh Carl did meet with the planning and zoning at its November 9th regular meeting. Uh Carl was asked a number of questions and Carl, of course, is, as expected, gave a lot of, some very pointed answers, which I thought were helpful. Uh Carl did recommend and ask the questions, the land use regulations, are they delivering the type of development that we want? Uh from an economic development perspective, does the EDC need uh an implementable strategy to encourage growth? Uh other things that came out of let's see here, I guess quite a bit. I'm going to have to consolidate these reports. Uh town planner uh met with the conservation commission. And during his report, he's going to be active in the sustainability and offering them some, some help. The uh planning and zoning uh is, is, is welcome to help out as well with submitting documents to the sustainability committee. Uh what else is going on here? There is the section 12 contractors, businesses and storage yards going to have a public hearing on December the 7th. I know that one's been back and forth for a while. Section 12 accessory apartments in section 18 coastal site plan review, possible public hearing on January 4th. Uh Kathy King, uh the Z E O and W E O is currently investigating a number of blight complaints with Steve Yenko from CRAD. John and Kathy have met with the developers, uh some conceptual plans for mixed use development in residual housing, but no applications have been filed at this point. Continued work on major redevelopment projects at the former Morgan site assisting with developers conditions of closing and coordinating with the town manager's office and we drive by there, you can see the unbelievable, how quick it's been with the demolition. Uh what else? There is just so much. Uh inland wetlands been on November the 5th. Uh there is a walk, a site walk this coming Saturday and that is probably, I'm going to have to do a better job at consolidating this report because there's, there is so much, but uh Mr. Chairman, that, that's it for now.
Thank you, Eric. Anyone else? No? All right, there are none. We move on. All right, none. We move on to motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
On favor?
Hi.
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 Happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Be safe.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.